We are. Okay, we'll get started with Commissioner on the table, Commissioner Laird.
So I've been giving some thought to the commission's decision to supplement the airlines. And I said that I would go along with it for a year. I guess the year is about up. And I just, I, I, I've been uncomfortable with that since we did it. And of course, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use one of Jim Mills' ideas that he brought up in, in some budget hearings when he would ask somebody to, if you want money for this or that, which one would you rather pick? And I think that's sometimes a pretty good way to ask a question. So what I'm thinking, would I rather give a million and a half dollars a year to an out-of-state large corporation to supplement their ability to run their own business? Or would I rather give the money to the Natrona County Library? And see that it gets to the people of Natrona County, that's what I will choose. I would rather give that money to the library or other agencies that serve our people that are in need of budget increases and things like that. So that's just one of my thought, one of my thought processes with respect to what we're doing there. I, there's just a part of me that, you know, I read in the newspaper where some of these counties don't have lawyers out in the county. So they're trying to get the legislators to pass some bills supplementing payment to lawyers. And so when I read what the legislators say to that, so why are we, why are we supplementing any private enterprise with, with taxpayer dollars? And all of the arguments that they had for not doing that for the lawyers are pretty much what I'm thinking about for some big multi-billion dollar corporation. But I'm open to hearing information that, that maybe I just haven't seen concerning doing that. By doing that, I mean supplementing a large corporation. And I am concerned about the, the money we have over in First Interstate Bank from the sale of the hospital. And I know we're going to address that. And so I'm happy about that, that we get something that, that is recommended to us hopefully by experts. Because I for one, don't contend to be an expert with what you do with that kind of money and the best way to protect that. Or even what to do with the money. And I, I have differing views about that as well, about what the county may need in terms of buildings and repairs. And I, we're working on finding out what it's gonna cost to to repair a lot of our buildings. And I'm hopeful that we'll get some insights into that before the end of the year. Thank you.
My take a bit, Commissioner Mill.
A little bit, just mainly gonna be touching on the Fair Board. So Fair Board meeting yesterday, talked about changing Carnival. There was a lot of concerns about Carnival last year, but also the, just to get his Carnival up here, it was over a hundred thousand dollars in fuel. And so he can't do it, Carnival from last year can't do it. So we found somebody else, or they found somebody else and, and it should be a lot bigger, it looks like, sounds like more filling. As you said, seventy-one paving is complete on the roadways around there. If you haven't seen, gone out and looked at it, it, it's pretty nice, every, all the roads, roadways, pathways are complete. We just have a little bit more to do on the, for the Phase Four project coming up on paving and it'll be, that one cent project will be complete. The grandstand bathroom debacle is going on, should have some paper hopefully here in a second. Some plans, different plans due to changes in building code and different restrictions and requirements that are in place at this time than when it was built for capacity of the building, for width of stalls, for this, that, and next thing. The, that project has taken on a life of its own, like it seems like everything else has. Just for the one, the big bathroom on the east side, the, the, the cost is going to increase unfortunately. They're actually having to put in more stalls, more areas and everything like that. It's, it's become, and, and county permits are working with them. We're trying to do what, everything that can, but you know, what, what applies, applies and we have to do what's legal. But this is going to increase the scope of the project, cost of the project. They are talking about potentially not revising the west bathrooms like they were. But since this, the cost increase will, thank you, will increase. Okay. Will increase as, as much as it will. They're looking at revising the scope of the project completely into where they will just focus on the east bathroom. If you look at the design on the big folded sheet. Number two is what the plan that they're looking for. You'll see that they're swapping the men's and the women's sides in order to expand the women's bathroom to such extent that, for the, the stall capacity that they're required to have. It's going to go clear over, they're knocking out wall, having to put stuff in. So once we went into a redesign or renovation, instead of just a maintenance and repair, it kicked in all sorts of new requirements. So number two is what they're looking at doing. Again, all that, you can see all that new wall, the new placements, new stalls. And like I said, they're swapping those two sides so they could actually do that, complete that with the, as much as they could without creating even more expense. Should, it may raise it, it'll probably raise it up to about three fifty, three sixty in cost. Instead of just the two fifty per side. That's why they're looking at reducing the scope to just the one bathroom instead of the two. There are several things that they are gonna look at doing themselves to try to help save on construction costs, but that's right now, that's, that's what they're looking at without them saving any money. So and doing anything themselves. So that, that's kind of where we're at with that. It's, it's, it's not something that anybody likes, but it's, it's kind of where we're at.
Jim, I have a question. When do they, when do they want to start construction on this?
They're looking, they're gonna have to have a, some engineering stamps and everything put on to paper for the, what design they want so that they can move forward. But they want, need to do it as soon as possible because there is nothing in that, what, east side bathroom right now. It's gutted.
So they want to get it ready for the next rodeo.
Yeah, they've got to get going before everything else starts. So their plan is to come, Tom and, and some of the board members want to get on the schedule as soon as they can. I don't know if they contacted you yet or not. Like I said, their meeting was just last night. So they want to try to get on a meeting in December and come talk to you, explain what's going on, just kind of give me a heads up right now.
Okay. I'll get with Michelle. I think some things may change on that second one again. So we might have some room, but it won't be the fifth. So.
No, no, I don't think.
Jim, so we were looking at the floor plan and then we look at the cost estimates, I guess. Option two is the one they want to do?
Yes.
Four hundred and twenty-nine?
Uh, yeah.
And then number three, it's three, number thirty-one, but it says, and the first sentence says it doesn't meet code requirements.
Right. And that's basically taking that bathroom setup back to the original. Other than swapping out the women's and men's side. Just to give a little extra room for the women's side.
And that was part of the reason for this, right? Was to meet code requirements?
Meet code requirements plus the entire, the bathroom is falling apart.
Yep, yep, okay. But I mean, these changes, a good majority of these were because of code requirements.
Right. And, and once you start renovating, as you know, and everything like that, you have to comply with the current code.
Has anybody looked at the the line to the sewer main? Are we comfortable that this additional, these additional fixtures?
That's where part of the cost is actually. They are going to be running some line, some cameras and some different things to actually try to figure out where the lines are. Because the lines aren't where they're supposed to be per the blueprints.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I see that on here.
Yeah, that's, I don't know where that was. But Tom talked about that last night as well. And I might have misunderstood it going through it all, but that may be within his contingency is where he's looking at. Cause the lines aren't not where they're supposed to be. And, and so he's trying to, they've got to mark that stuff out first before they can even start with anything.
Yeah, and, and figuring out where they are is important, but determining whether they have the capacity is
Right.
maybe more important. So we, I guess you could ask them, we could ask them, but we better not, I'd rather not have a, oops, we forgot about that. And have another hundred.
Anything else? I think he letting you know the cost overrun is, is more than enough for me.
All right. Commissioner Nick Wallace.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I, I think we could talk for days and days about the airport M R G. I had an opportunity to fly Friday on Delta and it was kind of a spur of the minute thing for a family situation out in Oregon. So Delta was the natural airline and the ticket was pretty reasonable, although I flew out on a six AM flight. So that's a little bit early, but on that flight, I met a lady sat next to her, name was Taylor from Gillette, and she had come down the night before and had gone out to dinner and she spoke really highly of that flight to Salt Lake. She was on her way to see a family member, her fiance in, in Salt Lake. And she was aware of a lot of people. She's in, in, at the community college up there and she's aware of a number of people that come down and use that Delta flight. And she had also earlier, I think in August, gone through Denver and then up to Salt Lake and found it quite a bit more expensive and a lot less convenient as you might expect. It's just an anecdote, but it seemed to me to be exactly one of the real reasons why we have for a long time and why other communities across the state look at the value of having carriers in town for that direct economic benefit. But I wanted to talk about the, about two other things. First, roads. I, I understand from Commissioner North that Mr. Hagler wasn't going to be able to attend today. I didn't know that we really had anything set up specifically, but I, I still feel like I'm in the dark and I don't know about the other commissioners, but I, I feel like I really don't have a clear understanding of how things are looking for our capacity and, and his department's capacity to, to handle a winter. And just to, like I said, during my last remarks at our last meeting, I'd love for him to come and tell us how he's doing and tell us what he needs, if anything. Or if he's fully staffed and all the machines are greased and lubed and ready to go, I'd like to hear that too, because in the last two weeks, I've heard from a couple additional people out there in the community that live in the county outside the municipal boundaries and, and they're concerned. And, and I know we're gonna hear a lot about it. And if we can't say that we were proactive, I think that reflects poorly on us in the county. So hopefully we can get more information. On the grant application, thanks to Clerk Good, we have a better idea of what's going on out there with grant specialists and administrators. By my rough count, it looks like twelve other counties have a person that handles grants. Seven of those are full-time employees. Four of them, it looks like are under the county commissioners and there are a few that are under the county clerk's office. I'd like to see, I'd like to have a conversation with Danielle and see if we can define, come up with a job description for that person, see what that might cost us and see if it's something we want to take the next step on. I, I do think that we have a number of grants right now that are have been received and we're hoping to get some more, but we're gonna have a lot of grant administration moving forward over the next few years. We don't know that Sustainable Strategies and Ashley has a lot of extra capacity, but they might be able to train or assist us, work with someone that we hire on a part-time or full-time basis. So I'd like to continue that conversation. Those are the things I had.
Good. Let's do mine real quick and then I'll turn it over to you, Dave. So in your packet, you'll see that there is a article about Congress considerate, considers potential deadly experiment with heavy trucks. This was brought by Mike Hagler to us. It's basically semi-trucks on the roadway. They're looking at doing an experimental program with them. They're about ninety-one thousand pounds heavier than what the normal truck is on the road right now. There's opposition to that. And so you also see in your packet, there's a letter that's been drafted to send to Senator Loomis. And so just review that and, and give your thoughts on whether you want to move forward on that letter or not.
Mr. Chairman, is that something that we're asked to approve tonight?
I don't think it needs to be approved tonight. Just wanted to bring it up in the roundtable discussion so you have time to review it and then give your thoughts on whether you want to move forward on it or not.
I, I personally think it's a good idea. And I also wonder, or would we also be sending it to Senator Brasso and Representative Hagman?
I don't have the answer to that question. I just know that we had drafted for Senator Loomis, but I'll get the answer to that and see whether or not, I would assume that we probably would send it to all three, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
You know, that's, I, I read that. I'm glad we're looking at that. I've had a lot to do with heavy trucks being involved in wrecks for years. And the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Act, but one of the things the trucking industry fights is one statistic. One, one fully loaded truck running up and down interstate highways does as much damage to the highway as twenty-eight thousand cars per year. That's the difference. And now when they want to go to ninety-one thousand and, and double, double long trailers, people don't realize the, the massive weight going down the highway at a speed of seventy miles an hour and the kind of damage that can be done. I've got a video on my phone right now where this seventy thousand pound trunk T-boned, truck T-boned a car out here by outside of Alcova and killed a little boy and hurt the little girl. And I don't know whether the mother's gonna make it or not. And you can just see, he just runs right into him, runs right over the top of him. Doesn't put on the brakes till after he's hit him. And they can't, when you're going seventy miles an hour and you have a truck that weighs seventy thousand pounds, it takes, it's, it's like an aircraft carrier. It takes you a good, at least a good mile, mile and a half to get it stopped. So I hope that this, I hope that they don't let these trucking companies do that because of the damage it does to our interstate highway system and the danger it is to the, the public. Especially here in Wyoming, especially on I eighty, that, that's some outrageous damage that's happened down there and the number of people that have died and been hurt and damaged done. So I hope we do do something about that.
Mr. Chairman, let me chime in on that too, because most of us have driven across I eighty on a regular basis and know how bad it gets. And it's not, not from the cars, but you add another twelve thousand pounds onto the legal limit of a truck and that will substantially increase the amount of road damage we have. We can't keep up with the the road system that we have right now and maintain that. And that's something that if they do increase that, that weight load, it's gonna make it just that much worse and, and it'll exasperate the situation even more because it won't be just a little bit more. It'll be an exponential factor with that additional weight and, and loads on those tires. Now, and the the number of times that I eighty is closed during the wintertime with the trucks we currently have because of wrecks and everything else, because of the drivers and everything else is associated. You add that additional weight behind them and it's gonna be just that much worse. So at least that's my personal feeling on it.
Okay. Get back to me with your thoughts on all of this and then we'll move forward accordingly. Next item that I have is Boys and Girls Club had reached out and over the next six months, they are going to have a program that brings in local elected officials to do a panel discussion with teams, Casper teams that are interested in, in understanding local government and how it works. So December happens to be the county commissioners' month. It is, it would start at five-thirty at night and run until about seven o'clock in the evening. So about an hour and a half. So I need somebody to, anybody that would be interested in. December fourteenth is an in-club date and has a meeting date of nineteenth. So I gotta, I need to verify which date that is with Michelle. But either the fourteenth or the nineteenth, I'm, I'm assuming it's gonna be the fourteenth.
I think the fourteenth is at their place.
Yeah. They come here. Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Cause that's our next meeting. So so if you're interested in, in that, let me know. So I can plug somebody into that slot. Next item I have is city and county board appointments, in particular, the Amoco joint powers reuse. It's not the members that we pick, but it's members from the public that apply for that. In the past, the county and the city have gotten together with one member, one commissioner, and then one council member, counselors, whatever they're called today. And they would do the interviews and then make the, the choice for those boards. So I also need somebody that wants to be on those boards. Okay, all right. Everything's been sent over to the floor as far as the application process. So probably just need to get with her. And then the last thing, we, I was talking with Legal about executive sessions and looking back, executive sessions forever, it seems have, we've gone out of a work session into an executive session. Problem is, is that you can't do a vote in a work session. It has to be in a business meeting. So they've been in the wrong spot forever and we need to correct that so that we're legally doing what we're supposed to be doing. So so starting now, moving forward, as soon as a business meeting is done, then we can vote to go into an executive session, have our executive session fall into business meeting. And then at the conclusion of that, then we'll vote to go out of it. But that's the only place that we can legally.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
Nice. I understand completely and I agree. I would put the exec at the beginning though, if we started, say at five, held a exec session, came in session, held exec session right at the beginning. Then at five, and then if it doesn't take a full thirty minutes, we can go into recess, come out of recess at five-thirty and start our meeting. Honestly, I'm, after some of our meetings at night, I'm just mentally wore out. I don't, to be able to go into exec session to discuss legal personnel or whatever, it might be just kind of taxing. So I'm concerned about.
So I actually like that idea. It would, because the discussion I had had is potentially moving the business meeting back. That would be up to, cause I don't want to do it until the first of the year anyways, but moving it back to start at five o'clock. However, I do know that we put it at five-thirty so that people can transition from work and actually make it here. So I, I actually like that idea better of putting the exec session first. But if we know that we're gonna go over a half hour, I guess my question would go back to Legal. Can we come out of exec and go back in if we need to after the business meeting is concluded?
Yes, I think we certainly could, Mr. Chairman, if, if we needed to. If we didn't, weren't able to get through everything at the beginning.
Or we could even start a little bit earlier than five. Five is just me throwing out a number. We could start at like quarter till five.
We're already here. It's just a matter of what we change, change what we're doing as far as making that the official meeting. And then just. Because there's a lot of times that we have exec that's basically just information. We're not voting, we're not taking action in there at all. And all it is, is just information on things. And so if that's the case, you know, we don't necessarily need to vote, but then we, if we do need to, then that's an option. But I agree with you. After sitting in here one night until eleven-thirty in a meeting, in a hearing, no, none of us were in any condition to talk about anything in exec session after that. And so we're gonna do it. I believe that it needs to be at the very first part and earlier. And if we have a long exec session, we can always publish that and, or a perpetual of a longer executive session, then we can talk about that ahead of time and we can publish it and change the date, the time, because the public's not gonna be involved in that anyway.
There's one point, Mr. Chairman. When I was on the city council, that city council had been sued for taking an executive session and then not announcing whether it had taken action on the point. And so they were sued and the case set in the court for a while, but the court finally ruled and said that the city had unlawfully followed the law and that they should have announced a, any action taken. And I was always, to tell you the truth, confused by that ruling because the people that, the people that filed suit came over after the case had been announced. And so we, we took a, we went into another session while the meeting was going on. And my advice was just go out there and tell them what, that you didn't take any action, which they didn't. And so this whole lawsuit that went on for two years, they, I thought it was, I kind of thought it was funny. Cause we go out there and Pacheco announces to the people who went, went flat with suit. This is to inform you that at that meeting, because I wasn't on the council when they had the meeting. Or when they got sued, but I was there when the judge ruled and that, and he just went out and said, there was no action taken and that was the end of it. So we probably do have to bear in mind, if we do take action, we may have to make a, a statement about it to the public. But I think our county attorney could review that, that case with the city. to the public, but I think our county attorney could review that, that case with the city.
Well, yeah, we had a similar situation that we had got, we were accused of taking action when we didn't take action. And that finally got taken care of and settled this last year. But, um, yeah, we can't take action anyway without having to be in a public setting. So unless it's a personnel issue.
I'll have you look into that aspect of it, but, um, I guess if everybody's okay with it, we'll just put the executive session to start at, uh, five o'clock, then we'll start the business meeting. If, if we need to go in executive session, we'll start the business meeting, then go into executive session and then come out at normal start time. Okay. Okay. I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Norris.
All right. I'm gonna talk to start with, I'll talk about the, uh, Markon Ranch. The BLM did have a planning, pre-planning meeting that, uh, I went to two weeks ago and one of the biggest concerns that I had is that they don't have any real plans right now for that whole area. And I was concerned because with the increased traffic that we're gonna have out there on the two county roads, we don't have a way to maintain them currently. And so that was one of the things that I did bring up specifically at that meeting is, is how we were gonna maintain those roads because both the roads that are out there that go through there, um, don't really have a base. When they get wet, you just go all over the place. And so that's something that I think that if the BLM is gonna increase the traffic load out there, which is what's gonna happen because they're going through private property was, what was once private property, then they need to bear some of the cost of that and especially with the increased cost of maintaining the roads. So that's just something I wanted to bring up to you guys. Um, the next thing, um, we have a committee that's been working on the um, statewide shooting complex and a proposal, um, for doing that. And I asked Tyler to come by today so he can kind of give us a little bit of an update on some of that and ask him questions or ask me questions and we can go from there.
Yeah, thank you. County staff, county commissioners, thanks for having me. Uh, Tyler Doherty with Visit Casper. So we've loosely had a committee, um, meeting since August about once a month. So it started with myself, uh, Justin Farley with Advance Casper, Zulima Lopez with the city, and we've since grown, um, to invite somebody from the county, um, user groups and anybody who we think would be beneficial in, in providing knowledge to, uh, specific locations, knowledge around what would be good for, um, specific setup. Darren Devine, I'm sorry, is another one with the Casper College. And so in preparation for the state of when they release kind of the guidelines for the RFP and what we can look for. And so where we're at now, they've released that, uh, we have to submit a letter of intent by March, uh, I forget the exact date. But it is our goal to, uh, submit a letter of intent that we would. March third, uh, would love to have it in Casper. And now we're trying to flush out where we feel the, the best location would be, uh, while also working with the state committee to figure out where the heck they are at. Um, they seem to be all over the place and those discussions can go, um, many different directions, but it is our interest. Uh, originally the committee had stressed that they wanted to, um, shooting complex that would be world class, that could host national shooting events. I think that will be our direction and goal. Uh, Cameo is a shooting range in Colorado that I think we're trying to mirror. So it'd be our, uh, objective to get down there and take a look at that. Uh, and then figure out if we can apply the same standards and, um, setup to, uh, to Casper. So it is our goal. Uh, I think at this point now, we're trying to add a little bit more structure as far as who the, um, would be leading the charge, um, if that is the city, if it's the county, um, I can, I think that's where we're at right now as we get more serious and look into, uh, the depth of this.
Right along with that, um, I did bring this all up to all the mayors, um, the breakfast last Thursday, and everybody is a hundred percent in support of this. Had there, we have several options as far as what we can actually do as far as who leads according to the state.
Correct, yeah.
So, um, there's some options out there, but we do need, I mean, I think everybody agrees that it needs to be an Inotrona County wide operation and not just either the city or the county per se, but it needs to be something we have buy-in from everybody involved. So.
Agree. Yeah. And I should stress too, that we've been trying to meet with user groups to get a better understanding of their current needs and current abilities with their facilities. Um, I think originally it was brought up, could we expand, uh, an existing facility? And based off of some of the, um, desires from the state, I don't think that's possible, but could we combine a few? Possibly if they would also want to shift to, um, one facility, but we're trying to vet that out with, uh, some of the user groups.
Tyler, two questions. Um, so is it narrowed down to certain cities right now and they're running through this or?
It is, it is not. Um, the best way I can describe it with the committee is that they've set some very loose guardrails as far as what they want to see. They are very adamant that they don't want to eliminate anybody up front and scare somebody away. Just based off what they initially said, it's, it's my feeling that you're gonna limit this to a certain number of communities just based off of what they want to see. Um, if you want a world-class facility, you need infrastructure, you need restaurants, you need hotels. That's gonna limit you pretty quickly. You need air, you need air travel to come in and, and be able to participate in that. So, um, but they're up front, they want to make sure that everybody has a, a fair shake at it.
And so then the second question, I guess, have you had an opportunity to have, or do you have any idea of like site selections or ideas of where you may want to put it?
We have some in mind. Um, and I think the committee's approach would be, we'd like to recommend more than one. Um, so the current state committee, they've put a uh, a high priority lately on the aesthetic of it and, um, having a background of the mountains or trees. Um, so we don't want to just present one and then they say they don't like it and that eliminates us. So we want to give them the option, hey, here's where we think we can do both. What would you like? How would you like us to proceed? Um, but I think our approach locally at the committee is we want to make sure that we have infrastructure built in near or around the facility so we can utilize that ten million appropriately.
Good. Commissioner Nicolason.
Thanks, thanks. Um, Tyler, have you talked to, uh, Jerry Davis and Wyoming Gun Company? I would think that they would be interested to comment and, uh, know a little bit more and maybe help, uh, with some of the information on, on, because the operation they're running.
Sure. I, and I have not. Um, so the, the user groups that we've had, um, Commissioner North, Darren Devine, and then, uh, Charlie Shop, um, are the three that we've approached. Um, but we need to, uh, approach the others as well.
Yeah. And then what about the second off shooting complex? If you, I don't know who's currently in charge out there. So I don't have a name for you, but obviously they are pretty busy.
Yeah. And I believe Charlie and his group utilize that, I believe. Um, and then Zulima.
Devine is also, he's part of that group. Yeah, he's, 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 he's an integral part of that, that shooting club that operates out there. And so, yeah, that is. Yeah, they are. And they're, that's one of the things that we're looking at. We're trying to get, we try to get input from the different types of things. This'll, this'll be an outdoor range, so it's not gonna compete directly with Wyoming Gun Company or some of that stuff. It's, is more or less, it's an outdoor type facility.
Well, if I, if I can though, um, you know, whether it, it is gonna compete with Wyoming Gun Company, maybe um, best determined by them. And, you know, even though one's outdoor and maybe at a different level and in a different area and the other's indoor and has a maximum of, you know, a hundred yards here. And, you know, they've invested a lot in that facility. I think it's personally, it's a top-notch facility. Um, and so hopefully it could be a win-win and, you know, kind of complimentary to what they're, they're doing out there.
Agree. Yeah. And we will reach out. Thank you.
You guys got any other questions about any of that? Um, they have, they just had a meeting last week, um, or this.
We met last Thursday.
No, they had a meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, the state, yes. Yep.
Uh, yesterday. Was it yesterday?
Well, they met Friday and Powell, I believe.
Friday and Powell. Or, and, um, watching through that, it was kind of painful because they're all over the place. Right now, you can tell that they aren't really sure just exactly what the parameters are. If they were, they were talking about the RFP, putting out letters, scoring systems and everything else. And, um, right now it's, it's definitely in the preliminary stages all the way across the board. So we really can't, other than looking for a specific location, or locations, I guess I should say, um, at this point in time, that's about as far as we can go because we have no idea what their requirements are gonna be or what they're gonna be looking for as far as, as, uh, the grading process and everything else. And this will have to go before the legislators, the entire legislative body for the vote. So it's not, uh, it's not just the committee that'll be voting on it. So.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tyler.
All right. Our long-winded county commissioner's got us behind. So Jim, you're up next.
Chairman, frail commissioners, um, asked to come today, um, just to get, uh, basically a decision and a process going, um, on our ongoing indigent slash unclaimed um, process that we have going. Um, and I'm gonna ask basically for like a, a three step, three-part type of deal here. Um, so since our last discussion, um, I've taken on twenty-two sets of remains which are currently out at the shop and that primarily came from bustards and a couple from, um, newcomer. But going forward, of course, all of them that, that go into gender and claimed are gonna end up with us in one way, shape or form. Um, the issue that I have right now is that, um, I have next of kin at least on one case right now, coming out of the woodwork that wants their loved one back. Um, the current case is, is one where, um, the young woman had, uh, two sons and both of them disabled. Um, I guess I'd put it, uh, somewhat mentally disabled and weren't in a position to make those decisions. And then a boyfriend, of course, which wasn't next of kin. In the end, she went unclaimed and went through the process and, and now I've got her. Um, since then I have the ex-husband, um, from the east coast come say, well, if I realized that, that she had died and, you know, I would take possession of her and get an urn and get her back to the kids, you know? Um, and even since that conversation, I've had a brother, um, come out of the woodwork. It's like, yeah, I, I want her remains. Um, my feeling is, and again, this isn't my decision to make, and that's why I'm before you, is that we release them, release them back to family, not just her. Um, but I would like to go through the ones that we've collected from bustards and stuff that may be years old and what have you. Um, see if we can't find next of kin, see if they want them and releasing them so that they're not just sitting out on, on our shelf forever and ever. I'm in. Um, the second piece of this is that the state is, is probably true with a lot of our stuff is behind the times and there is no statute that, um, states what happens after disposition. So once somebody's been through the process, whether it's through a family, whether it's through indigency or unclaimed in us, um, there is nothing that says what can or should happen with those decedents. I mean, we could literally go out to the landfill and throw them there according to statute and be perfectly fine with that. Of course, we're never gonna do something like that, but, I mean, there is, there is nothing in statute that states, you know, like other states have, what happens after disposition and a process that needs to be put in place for that. So, um, one thing I would like to see, maybe this group work on is a resolution for our county where there isn't a state statute that says what we're gonna do. Um, and how I think that should look would be how the current process runs now. Um, but once we've passed disposition and we have them, um, having a timeline and a process for, um, I guess final disposition of, of those decedents, which, um, right now, um, I'm only doing cremation orders. So they're all cremains. Um, but say at ten years, um, we have a process that says after ten years, if we haven't been able to get family to take responsibility or we don't know family or whatever, that we have a place somewhere in the county, nice place, um, where we can take these and, you know, take someone of faith with us, say some words and spread them. Um, and it would be kind of a rotating deal and that way we're not holding people forever and ever, you know, till the end of time. Um, and they're getting some sort of proper burial in the end. So, so first thing is, is I need permission to say, okay, you know, you can release what we do have if I can get family that wants them to the families. And then the second piece is having some, some sort of process in place that says what we do in the end, um, with everybody else.
Jim, is there something that says that we cannot? I mean, why would we need permission to, to turn remains back to somebody? It, it sounds to me like in the case you just said, you got like people from all different walks of life that were in this person's life that, that want them back. So to me, sorting out who the right person to give it back to.
Right. And, and the, the only reason I'm asking is because, as you know, this isn't my program, my decision to make. I've agreed to manage basically the fiscal side of that and all the paperwork that goes with it, but this indigency program, unclaimed program belongs to the commissioners. So before I go and just turn them over, I want to make sure that you guys are on board with me doing that. So that someone doesn't come back after the fact and, and you guys go, well, Mr. Whips is out there running some rogue program of, of just giving people away. So.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think we need a legal memo from our county attorney as to what our responsibility here is and what statutes apply to this. I can tell you, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing this on a resolution. And I also think that we could probably get a legislator to get something like this put through. If you have examples of what other states do, but, uh, a resolution isn't a law that's binding on, I would feel very uncomfortable as a commissioner telling anybody what to do with anybody's remains by resolution. I would rather there is a statute that applies to us that we have to take care of this situation.
And there is, and this, the statute commissioner, you know, basically goes up to and stops at that final disposition.
Right.
And, you know, we, in the, the past meeting where we had the funeral homes here, you know, it's, it's basically been brought up and rightfully so that their contract is with the county for that disposition and, and they're not responsible for holding. So, um.
But what I would be looking for is not only the statute, but any case law that's been decided in Wyoming or other states where, cause these are the kind of statutes that get interpreted. And for, and I think you're hitting all the moral points. But, uh, this is one where Mr. Chairman, I would want a full, uh, legal opinion and one that would incorporate research from other states. Because I think we could put something together and give it to some of our legislators and it's the kind of thing that they're not gonna debate for very long, other than the costs of it all. But morally, I think that the family should be able to come in and get their loved one, uh, period. But.
Now in other counties, you know, and I'll, I'll take Fremont, for example, it doesn't matter who pays for what or does what. The remains are going to the family.
Yeah.
Um, the families actually petitioned the county commission. My position isn't involved at all. Um, in this county, I'm kind of the middle. In this county, I'm kind of the middle man in this, but they petitioned the commission to say, we can't pay for our loved one's burial and the commission decides on that indigency thing goes forward. But they're, they're always given back to the family no matter what, unless they're true indigent, which means they have no next of kin. Or the family is truly abandoning them and doesn't want anything to do with them, which we do have.
Well, there's nothing in the statute that says a family has to pay to get their loved one back.
No, and, and you rightfully brought that up in our, in our last discussion about this. And I, I would never have them, you know.
That would be terrible to do that.
Yeah.
I, I would, can't even believe that some counties might even consider doing that. That, that to me is.
No, and, and now that statute has changed where those monies aren't taxpayer monies anyway, really? I mean, this is a special fund set up for out of everybody paying more for a death certificate and then put into a special fund and then it's a money out, money in kind of deal that passes through the county. But again, you know, statute, at least in our state, pretty much stops right there and, and doesn't give any leeway for what happens to those remains after that disposition has taken place, after the financial and all the, the paperwork as far as registrars and, and death certificates and all those things have taken place, you know, there's, there's nothing in place that says, well, what happens to these people? So.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Jim. I agree with Commissioner Laird in that the legislature ought to take a look at this. It's a budget session, but maybe there are some budgetary components of this. So maybe it can, it could move forward in theory. I'm not sure if we can get much traction with the short amount of time that we have before the session. And I, I know that, for example, the Wyoming County Commissioners Association would want to look at the financial impact to the counties on this before, you know, and it may or may not take a position on it. But I'd, I'd like to have a better sense of what the costs are in, in this. I think that, I also like what Commissioner Laird said in that it'd be useful for me, whether we're doing it at the state level or at the county level, and we might be able to, you know, in the interim, move more quickly. But, but if we saw what other counties in Wyoming or even what you've seen in other states being done and have maybe a couple of options for us to consider, then maybe we can adopt something. I also think it's a good idea to have our county legal department just make sure that, that it's, that there aren't any red flags in the process. So, thank you.
So in the, in the interim, with lack of statute and everything, I, I guess, my most immediate question is, is are you all right with me giving this lady's remains back to her brother? I mean, there's, there's no legal ramifications to that or anything else. He truly is one of the next of kin or next of mine that would be willing to take responsibility for these remains. And that's really the only active one that I have going. I've had other inquiries, but nothing active.
I personally feel that the remains should be given back to the family. The only, the only question that I, that I come up with in that is, you know, how do you, how do you make sure that it goes back to the right person or who's deemed to be the, the person that should receive those remains? Because what I don't want to do is give remains back to somebody and then we end up in some big battle because the boyfriend wanted her and, you know, the brother got her.
The boyfriend would have no right to her. The only people that would stand in the middle of this particular case would, would maybe be, like I said, the two sons, because they, they're first in line before the brother and before the ex-husband or anybody else. But again, with their mental incapacity, you know, I don't know. I, I could certainly approach them and have that conversation and say, listen, you know, are you all right with uncle getting these remains?
Getting them, right.
My, my, my thought is that you could get, and what I did in my former life when we had the potential of two parties making a claim to the same TV. For example, something's left in a rental unit and maybe it's more than just a TV. Maybe it's a whole outfitted apartment. You have a indemnification and hold harmless agreement. It's a one paragraph kind of short form thing and, and they make a representation that they have the authority to take it and that if they don't, that we would have some recourse. Now, honestly, what are we going to do about it? Maybe not much, but at least it should shut down the conversation. The other thing that's done commonly on the estate side is having a consent. They're actually called consents and it's a, again, a one pager and it's people saying, yeah, I agree that in this case, this individual should get the remains. And you give them the blank form, they go out and get it signed by a couple of people and maybe only do that if multiple people have made a request or demand for remains. So I, I think those could protect the county.
I do have one other case and I'll, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm playing flat, just going to have them give me the money and give them to them. We had a case where we had a lady that was truly indigent, no next of kin. Funeral home turns them over indigent to us after a period of time. And then out of nowhere, we're getting calls from someone that was the estate manager that's saying, wait a minute, she had money to be buried and all this kind of stuff. And it's, it's part of her deal and you know, the person that was managing that estate and her affairs, you know, was like, well, I'm just going to bring you back your $1,500 and we'll go have her buried. So, and, and to me, there's, you know, it's like, that's just something basically got missed by the funeral home because shouldn't have never gone indigent to begin with. So.
It's a touchy, touchy business, isn't it? You know, the, because what you're really applying here is the Wyoming intestacy statute, which says if you die without a will, who, who, who is in the chain that gets your estate if you have no will? And so if it's a husband or wife, it would be the husband or wife. If there is no husband alive and they have two children and the uncle is down their ways and cousins, they're all in there. And I'm not sure, you know, that's why I would want to know what other states do if they, if they kind of rely on their, because there's other statutes that could apply here that you're not familiar with. And the intestacy law could be one of them. Depending upon how, how we categorize remains and what they really are, are they property? I doubt it. But what would it be? But I'm uncomfortable with the whole situation unless there's a statute. Mr. Nicolason mentions, and I'm thinking release, lawyers think like that, you know, with getting releases from people, but they're under a lot of pressure. They're, they don't understand it. They don't have a lawyer involved. They're in tears and they sign something, they don't even know what they sign. Quite frankly, I wouldn't want to make the decision unless there's a statute that says that here's the, here's your parameters and this is what we follow. And if you have a brother and two sons and, and a sister and they all want it, what do you do? Because you probably do have people where they've lost track of their loved one and they don't know what happened to them. And then here they are within the state with money in it. And the family would, you know, want to, and this person probably had something and wanted to be buried with relatives and all that kind of stuff. So.
Yeah, and like in the, the first case I talked about, you you did have other family that didn't know this was going on, but had direct next of kin who unclaimed them. So, you know, it, it's like, they, they finally figure out that, that their loved one is dead and it's like, what do you mean? They're, they're sitting out there on your shelf and, you know, I want them.
And then if the religion would have come into it, somebody came in and said, well, give half to my brother and half to me. And if you're a Catholic, that isn't, that's prohibited by Catholic church to do that. So you got to be careful with all of that as well.
Yeah, it's a fickle mess. I, I just know, like I said, it's really belongs in your ball court as far as.
Belongs in the legislature's ball court.
Yep, somebody's, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm the one getting the inquiries out there and I'm, I'm not the one really that can make that decision. So.
Well, Jim, it seems like the long term is the legislate, legislators to make some kind of a fix. Heather, I look at you because it's like, what in the short term, could we do some researches to the best practice and, and at least be able to give some direction to, to, to Jim and ourselves on how we want to deal with these situations, especially the ones where we have people that are wanting to come and claim them?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, our office will start looking at what, what is in place and work with the coroner to determine at least what we can do in the short term.
Good.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicolason.
I don't know how long that process is going to take. Do you feel like you ought to get back with this family?
At least the first one, the brother, you know, I mean, he's basically expecting a call from me from tomorrow explaining something and I can certainly tell him.
Do you, do you think, let me just interrupt to get to the point. Do you think there's any liability or risk to the county if we turn that over? I don't see this one as particular.
I don't, other than, like I said, maybe before turning it over, I get with these sons and let them know explicitly that this is what's going on and, you know, because in the end, you know, mentally disabled or not, the original issue was is they couldn't pay. And so maybe they just want them, you know, as opposed to the uncle or something like that.
I think where you have multiple people wanting them and they're in different categories. They're not like a brother and a sister. You got two sons. I think you got to get with the sons because I would think that under most statutes that you might find in other states, they'd be the next in line.
Well, they are by our statutes. I mean, our, our statutes and rules specifically have a hierarchy.
That's the intestacy law. So, but they're, they're after the husband or wife.
Spouse, children.
Right.
Mother, father.
Right.
And then goes down to brothers, sisters and all of that.
And cousins, yeah.
I think the question's kind of been answered on its own here. If, and you can stop me if I'm wrong, Heather, but honestly, going down the list, if the sons are the next ones, I would talk to them. If we check that box and they say, no, that we're fine with it going to the next person who would be the brother, then I think we're good at doing that. And we get to him, then Turner remains ours.
Not everybody else obviously can hold in limbo until we get some better thing going with the legislator or somebody else.
Yeah. Okay.
I would agree. And Mr. Whips, we could, we could talk with you before you get in touch with them if, if you have any questions.
Okay. No problem.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to the Commissioner's investment discussion.
Gentlemen, I have a question that's been, that's come up. I, I, when I saw who put in their bids for this, I didn't see someone who I knew was interested and that was the Murphy Group. And so I asked him why he didn't put in, he said he didn't know anything about it. So I don't know what notice we, we gave to people to, to advise them. They could put in an RFP. So I, so I just would like to understand that too.
Well, I actually got a text from the person you're talking about and they missed the deadline, didn't realize that the opening was online for the RFP. And asked if they could submit a sealed bid anytime before the end of the week, of which I informed them that that deadline has come and gone, but bids have been open. So that's not.
Was there something online about that where they would have had notice?
Yep.
Well, that takes care of it.
Obviously, because we've had several other people that have put in that do, you know.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yep. So.
If notice was given, then that's, that's, that's it.
Yep.
Did you answer that? Did you answer him?
I did.
Okay.
So who wants to open up the discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicolason.
I just wondered if Heather could maybe lay the table for us and tell us, not specific information, but advertisement, county website, bids open for, if you can do that and then maybe you can paraphrase or summarize kind of the framework for where we stand and, and, you know, what we ought to do next and what the timeframe might be. I have ideas, but you've probably been thinking about it more recently than I have.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nicolason. So the, the RFP was posted on the county's website. We did publish it in the, the Casper Star, I think four, four times, I guess. Four, okay, twice on November 4th, November 11th. We made the timeframe kind of short because we're, we're trying to get this done before the end of the year. So it, it was posted, it was published. We did get four bid proposals. We opened those this morning. They all, at least, you know, just glancing at them appear to comply with what we requested within the RFP. I think what we're, we're thinking about now is what the, the selection committee is going to look like, who's actually going to dig into these proposals to see whether they, they do comply and, and who the best candidate's going to be based on the criteria we've laid out on the RFP. And so I guess the question I have is whether this is going to be something that the entire commission is going to be a part of or just a few members? And then who else the commission would, would like to have on there? Nick is willing to, to be part of that as well. And then if, if you would like somebody from our office, myself or somebody, I don't know if any of us have any particular financial experience up in legal, but certainly at least one of us could, could be a part of that too, if you'd like.
So to add to that, the, the last thing you said is exactly the way I feel. I don't know how many people up here have the financial expertise to, to dig into this and say, you know, one way or another, you know, what direction we should go or who we should go with. That's my personal opinion. I would like to see people on that committee that do have a, a background in this that are able to sit down and decipher all this information to see who, who or whom are the best avenues for us to go down.
Yeah, and I, I think what you're saying is what I've been saying, which is, I would like us to have our own expert tell us what he or she thinks and explain it to us so we understood, so that we can be an expert in it without, you know, floundering around here. Because what, you know, what I see the issues are is what's the best investment in terms of the return? And what's the safest investment from the standpoint of losing, losing money? And is the institution that wants this, are they insured to the extent of the full 90 some million? That if all of a sudden you wake up on, you know, whatever date it was in 1929 and you did have any 91 million? But now they've, they've got places that seem to be able to insure themselves. And so those are my basic concerns. I mean, I know enough about it that, but yes, I think we ought to have people that, that I know a couple of guys that have a hundred million, but I don't think they want this job.
Commissioner Mill.
I'd agree as far as needing some subject matter experts on the committee. I believe the treasurer should be represented, whether it's through Nick or Tom or whoever, but I also believe that the board cannot let go of the reins either. It needs represented by one or two at least. I don't know if a full board should be on it just because then we're going to have to run into meeting laws and whatnot like that. And some of the conversations may have, you know, while they're there, they need to be frank and open. And, and if they need to be behind door for a second, then so be it. But that, I see the, this committee group being led and Heather's got a good point. I mean, perhaps one of her or her be, being on the committee as well as just maybe a silent partner or something, potentially just for, to answering legal questions from the, for the county's perspective. But yeah, no, we, we definitely need to have at least treasurer and one or two commissioners. If, if we add one or two or three subject matter experts, that would be spot on. That's how I kind of foresee it.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I think Nick Martinez is a no brainer, someone from the treasurer's office. He appears. office. He appears willing, and we know he's capable. I think someone from legal department. Again, this is selection committee. This is not investment committee. Now, maybe moving forward, it looks similar with the individuals, but right now it's it's selection. I would tend to agree that two commissioners would be sufficient, and then one person from the outside that has some experience with selection of investment providers. I struck out a couple times in in some offline discussions with some people that had no dogs in the fight. And I have one or two other ideas of individuals that I'd like to approach. But then they review these, they make a recommendation. I think it's worked pretty well with the Nitrana County Health Department Building Committee, Executive Committee, I guess it is, that then, you know, kind of reviews the details, has the discussions, interviews, and then makes a recommendation. So that's how I see it. And that's what I'd like to see is a five member selection committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Laird.
I think Mr. Nicolason has a good idea. I guess what I'm also hearing is is that it's it's kind of like the zoning board, isn't it? I mean, the zoning board looks something over and makes their recommendations, and it comes to the commissioners, and the commissioners vote on it ultimately. So am I right on that, Mr. Nicolason? Is that your thinking? The other thing that I don't know if this is in your thought process, but I do you think these meetings should be open to the public so they can see what's going on on YouTube? Because, you know, sometimes somebody sees something and has some insight that we may have missed or didn't know about, and then they call in and say, you guys know this? And I think that this is the people's money, and it's and it involves a touchy touchy issue with most people because it's the it's their hospital money that people have been paying on for years to establish the hospital. So I would, I personally wouldn't feel uncomfortable to to have that be public. And that, the whole, I think the whole town would support that if you want to know the truth. So that's a thought.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
I probably didn't say that correctly when I talked about that. It's not avoiding public scrutiny. It was to have a clear and frank discussion amongst the committee members, but not to have public input as far as a meeting for public discussion. It's it's discussion amongst members. But if the public wants to view it, I'd fully endorse that. It's just it'd be no public discussion. If they want to come comment later or something like that, that's awesome.
Or put their comment in.
Right, right, right. But at at the time of the discussion with while the committee's working, that that needs to be where the committee can sit and talk.
But but you're thinking that would be okay then to have that on?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
People could see what.
Like I said, I probably I didn't explain it correctly.
Yeah.
But yeah, no, it's it's just to.
I'm glad.
Let the committee work, do its work.
I I just think in the long run of things, you're you're right on the track, Jim, because I think the public is is looking at us with a little bit of a slanted eye, shall I say, about this investment and this money. And if it's out there, it's just like what you told me here, you put it online. If you didn't get your deal in on time, it's whether you're a good guy or not, I'm sorry. But here, if the public says, why'd you do this? And we said, well, it was online, you could have watched it. And you have the right to put in a note that said, here's why you don't think they should do this. That takes care of the issues for me. I I just don't want to be sitting here being criticized down the line that the public said you guys did this undercover of darkness.
Yeah, and that's not what I meant. I was trying to explain just the committee doing the business, getting the work completed instead of being.
And I'm I'm confident with the way Mr. Nicolason wants to do it. I mean, I just think that we we need to have a big shining light on it.
Well, Commissioner Laird, just note differently what we're doing right now. I mean, it would be a general work session on YouTube, just like we are without public, being able to comment on it. So so I think we're good with that. So the next question, then, I guess, is are there any commissioners, if we're picking two, are there any commissioners that are interested in sitting in on this? Got Commissioner Mill and Commissioner North.
I'd like to.
Commissioner Nicolason.
I don't anyway. I don't I don't know. I don't think we need three, but I would be interested. So it kind of depends on how strongly people feel about it.
Well, I'll go back to what Commissioner Mill said. If we have three, then it's a it's a meeting. And so I think it needs to remain at two there. And then, of course, Nick from the treasurer's office and whoever Heather wants sent from legal, whether you want to be there or have somebody else go. So I guess I'll leave the discussion between the three of you to figure out who's going to be on.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know about that, but I'm confident with anybody on this commission serving personally, because I think that I think that everybody here wants to protect the money. Now, and I wouldn't want to make the choice either, and I'm not going to make a choice. But what I think is that everybody needs to search their own conscience as to who was involved when this when this business got sold, and who was involved when that other money got invested, and why did we lose three or four million dollars, which I've never really gotten to the bottom of, other than having been told by some stockbrokers that was probably the culprit probably is somebody that was selling these bonds. And that most stockbrokers would have said you should never buy zero bonds when these were bought. I don't even understand that. That's why I'm not interested in. I just don't have the expertise about it. But new blood, it doesn't hurt anything, you know? And so I think maybe the three of these guys should work it out. And if they can't, I think they ought to flip a coin. I don't think that a decision needs to be made other than that, because I personally think they're all competent.
What's that?
Yeah, you can arm yourself.
Okay, I guess the next question is, when when are we wanting this investment committee to meet? Sure. So you want to do it Thursday, Thanksgiving? No.
I mean, I think ideally, we're wanting within the next next week or something to get.
Right, following week, okay.
What was that other way of picking them, Mr. Chairman? They drew straws or whatever?
Rock, paper, scissors.
I don't I don't see a I don't see a more fair way of doing it than that, actually.
Well, I guess the other que I guess the question I have is, is we're going to have a meeting next week. We know what we have the selection process in place, or we know who's going to be on this selection committee, minus figuring out two out of three. I mean, this is something that the three commissioners can figure out amongst themselves. And and then we'll set a date next week to have this first meeting, and and we'll they will have the names of who's going to be involved.
So whoever wants to address this, just so that I have a little firmer grasp. So once the committee is formed, they're going to have, I don't know how many meetings or how long a time, do you does anybody expect this is going to take?
Really have to have a meeting through the documents and then start having meetings on on that.
Interview the people who have applied.
With the selection committee interview and then make its get together, make its recommendation, get that to us. And then I don't know if we can invite them.
And then we vote on it, is that?
Hopefully.
Sorry, but you're asking, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
January fifth is when the draft that they potentially bid, but if the commission needed to for another option, that might be a possibility. I just can't guarantee my commitments through January.
Right.
And that's all I was asking.
So hopefully all that work down the recommendation committee for the nineteen action by this commission.
Nineteenth of December, you're talking about?
Yeah.
Just I always I always say, people, things do slow down at Christmas time.
But yeah, but we have deadlines to meet.
Yes. Well, but you then you've got these other, the people that are maybe selected and what all their deadlines are too. Could be a different deadline.
Right. Okay, so are we getting moving forward with this process?
Yeah.
Good. Okay. Anything else we need to cover on this?
Only one thing. Do it correctly.
Right. Michelle, you're up.
Chairman, all I need is for you to review the resolutions. These are yearly resolutions. There's our meetings, our holidays, meeting the official newspaper, the legal depository. I send those out to Tom Doyle as well as Nick Martinez. And they didn't say anything, so I'm guessing nothing changed. And then there's our investment, our invest pressure operations accounting to invest. Money fund. And then there's the statement of investment policy. And I don't know if that one, but it's pulled off. And then these would be scheduled to be included on the December fifth meeting. Would anyone move forward?
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner North.
I have a question for Heather. Talked about it yesterday morning. What is the verdict on Resolution twenty three since the Casper Star Tribune is not published in Nitrana County anymore and hasn't been for a while?
So the the resolution does say that it is published in Nitrana County. It is, I think, the only paper in general circulation. So it pretty much has to be the official newspaper of the county. We do need to to choose an official newspaper. I think the the wording in the resolution can be changed from published to circulated in Nitrana County.
That that's fine. I would just rather, so that way it's it covers what it really is, because it's not, since they pulled out everything.
Aren't.
Yeah, yeah, I'd just rather say circulated or distributed or something else.
Yeah, I was shocked when I read how much their circulation was, which isn't very much.
No, it's not.
Four thousand people.
Do we have other options besides?
Not as far as I'm aware.
Not a little city?
Right now, and I don't know if you, if everybody on the commission is aware, but there is a current lawsuit with Lee Enterprises between the Town and Mills and R. None, because they are challenging the Star Tribune, because they aren't really local anymore. And so guess we'll wait and see how that turns out. But that is that is one of the biggest questions.
Aren't they challenging the definition of print media or as well?
I think I think so. I I would have to, I mean.
Just whether it's printed on their screen or printed in a piece of paper.
Yeah, I I think that's one of those things that as long as with today's Pat Holcher was at the meeting on breakfast at on Friday morning, and we discussed that a little bit, and that was reasonable. Why they are they are discussing that as far as if you can actually look at something that's published on online, like Oil City News is or some of the others versus where there has to actually be a printed document on in a newspaper form. So it's a challenge on their part. But like I said, when they when they said that they weren't going to do it anymore, and Lee Enterprises sued them, it's going to be interesting to see how that how that turns out.
Well, and they do have that. As you read that, what's his name, Holcher took somebody's deposition down there at the Star Tribune, and they got the real numbers out of them, which was under ten thousand.
Yeah.
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 So there's four thousand elderly people that read the newspaper they do publish, and then all of the young people listen, look at Oil City and Facebook and all of those kinds of things. I don't know whether those fit our statute or not.
Okay, any other comments on yearly resolutions?
Mr. Chairman, on the resolution announcing your commissioner meetings, as Heather pointed out, we should probably change all those times to five P M.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Just one minute. While I'm on that show, because I don't think you were in here, the five P M would be the start of the executive session. So we'll actually go into a business meeting, do the executive session, and then we can start our meetings at five thirty as we normally would, and not the way you and I talked about, do an executive afterwards. Okay, Commissioner Mill.
Yeah, it's just kind of opening up for discussion a little bit. I know it's it's this board's intent, whether we get to it or not, or when we get to it, whether it's this year, next year, whatever, it'll probably be next year with our current state of things. The resolution for statement of investment policy for twenty twenty four, and then the the following statement of investment policy that that's included, I'm just, I'm wondering if we're going to set up eventually an actual investment committee, if we should hold off on this one resolution and the 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 statement of policy until we are able to formulate or put together a commit that committee, and then they can come back with a policy, either revision or new or whatever that we can accept at that point. Currently, it just basically, I think, I believe it would put our investments. There's no end to this policy. It's it's not saying that it couldn't continue on from last year or the year before, every year that we've prior put this together. I'm just wondering if we want to just hold off on this for a little bit until that group can come together and and give us a good policy and and resolution to move forward with.
Would you be okay with a revision to it? Because I just, it seems to me that policies, a lot of policies that we're finding either are non exist or have been haven't been looked at in forever. And I think that we finally have something in place here that I would like to to move forward on. And if if a policy committee comes forward and wants to make revisions to it, that's great. But I think just stopping things to wait for that to happen is part of the problem of what we have in this county is we don't seem to ever get anything done. So in in, don't look at me that way. Well, but I mean, if we stop, I mean, if you look at some of this stuff, we've got, we've got policies that haven't been reviewed since two thousand and six. So I think that.
Sorry. And and that's kind of to my point is, is we put in another one and then have to go backwards or go back and review it again or whatever. We've got a lot of policies that have been put in place or resolutions that are out there that we may not know about or whatever. Is will this just become another one of them?
Well, my my hope is not. My hope is that the investment committee comes together and they review this, and they they don't make any changes. You know, it was it's done properly and covers everything. Will that happen? Maybe not. There'll be a few tweaks to it. But I just think that if we put the brakes on and then say, all right, let's get through our investments and figure out what we're going to do from there. And then after that, then we'll get back. after that, then we'll get back to this. Do we ever really get back to this? It, it just, it seems like that's happened.
I mean, I'm just, like I said, just opening up discussions. Just kind of curious what everybody else thought of it.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should have the resolution. I agree with you. And I think it should be one of the first things that gets signed before this committee goes into action. I don't want to rely on an old resolution with this money. This money's got a little shine on it right now. And so I think that we, Jim, I don't think we want to put this resolution off. I think this is something the public's looking at.
This, this doesn't have anything to do with what we're.
Well, it does with investments. It, it could apply to the investments, and it's a guideline for the committee.
Right, but the R F P and the selection, this is, oh, I see this as the.
This is a statement of investment policy, yeah.
Right. And so I was just kind of looking at it in a different viewpoint, I guess.
I just think the more of that we can get up to date surrounding this money, the, the more protected we as commissioners will be in the, in the protective of the communities of these money.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nick Lees.
I understand where Commissioner Mill's coming from, but I also understand where the chairman's coming from. And, and I was wondering, is this the same policy that is currently in effect, or has it been modified?
Chairman, I believe this is the same one. It's, it's in effect, been in effect for the last few years.
So this, from my recollection was when we looked at this in June, I believe, it, it's an older, I mean, it's not brand spanking new, and it may need some updating. But I just wanted to clarify that it hadn't been revised. I do think that we need to take a fresh look at it, and that's a process. But I don't have a strong feeling on whether we adopt this again, or we just leave the current one in place. I do think we need to come back to it sooner than later and make sure it currently fits what our vision is.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Mill.
I think what would make me feel a little bit better, I think, actually, because like, like Commissioner Lees said, we, this is, it's here. It's already here. It's already been done. It's, it's one of those policies I feel that is just hanging out there, really. But I, I don't, we don't have to do it now. I think what would be, make me a little bit more comfortable or happier or whatever, would be if we just had a sub whatever or a new section in it that said, that established that investment committee. We had that, then, then we have something to say, yeah, we're going to move forward with it. I don't know. Is there a resolution or is there something that we have to do to establish that committee anyways? Recommendations?
So I, I would, I think it would be a good idea to create the committee by resolution, yes, and designate, you know, who's going to be on it, or at least.
Right. Could that be done within the framework of what we have before us now?
Um, I think, I think this could be modified to, to put that committee into place and identify who the members are going to be, yes.
And when you say the members, as far as two commissioners, one member of the revenue?
Yep.
And the public.
And the public, yeah.
Rather than, yeah, identifying individual people, just what their role is.
Yeah.
That, that's all my comment.
So do they have modification on there now, you're saying, and then go ahead?
Before we pass it tonight, yeah.
Yeah.
It, it, I, I think it just kind of helped light a fire under us to get it done.
And actually, these don't get passed until the fifth, so we got time.
We got time to.
Yeah. Any other comments on resolutions? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Actually, two amendments at a time.
Got something. Speaking of not getting things accomplished. We had Stu Anderson come down here and present. He penned a, legal has already gone through it and is prepared, is ready to go out for public notification and everything. And I would like to see us go ahead and move that forward on the vegetation, urban wildlife, or urban wildland fire stuff, so we can get that moving forward and get that adopted after the first of the year. Because I know we're going to have a forty-five day period. We're going to have public notice. It's going to have to come back through plan and zoning and then come back to us for final approval. So I'd like to get that started.
Commissioner Mill?
I'd actually, I'd agree with that. I'd like to see that process start on, on getting that moving forward so we can get the public comment going and, you know, next year, get it done potentially.
I would like to see it move forward. That's what you want to know. I'm looking at something.
I looked at you and Dave pointed at you.
He got his mic on, so.
Okay.
I didn't know. I didn't know what he was doing. I was looking at, who is Amanda Pretis Mill? Is that a Mill? That's somebody that.
She's with the Boys and Girls.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Does that mean you're signing up for that?
No, I'm on this other.
It's down to me like he did.
C J S B, C J S B.
So Mr. Chairman, it'll be a text amendment, so we'll have to go through the process for that. We'll have to have a, like a neighborhood public type meeting for some input and then, yeah, get a, get it before planning and zoning and then the commissioner. So we'll start trying to get dates together and, and get the notice ready. If the commission's okay with it, we'll have the notice for publication on the meeting on the fifth then for your approval.
Since it's full count.
Yes, it would, yeah.
And any documentation that goes along with this, we would be able to put up on the website so the people have access to it, go through it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Right on cue. All right, Leader, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. So what I, the only item I have on the agenda that I'm aware of is the full speed dissolution. And last session, you all signed off on the findings of fact. And I have not heard from anyone else, any other citizens, but for the ones I mentioned last time. And I think we're good to go.
So we're good?
We're good.
Okay, that was easy.
I know. Got some good exercise running down here, though.
Yeah, you must have hit the easy button.
And we actually, we have one more. Hidden Valley is the last one from the original group that I guess had kind of lingered for whatever reason. And after that, I'll have the, or we'll have them all done. And then we can wait for the next list to come down.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, that's okay. We were watching from up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that brings us to you, Heather.
It's just kind of a busy agenda to see if there's any questions on the items on there. There were two grant agreements that came over from the sheriff's office. I don't, he's left, so he would have the best information on those, although looking them over, it appeared they were for, I think, terrorism response and prevention type things. The first grant for a hundred and one thousand seven hundred and sixty-six was for bomb suits and X-ray equipment. And then the second grant for twenty-six thousand seven hundred was for impact resistant window wrap. So.
Ball equipment. Yeah, good. Homeland security.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then we've got the resolutions with the naming of the roads, vacating Enberg Road. Basically, that's just cleaning up something that started quite a while ago with getting the, the road to, it was not located in the actual right of way, but through working with the landowner and what appeared to be maybe some litigation, we've gotten the deeds and approvals from the landowner so that it actually now fits in the right of way. And we just need the commissioners to approve this resolution and it'll be done. But if there's any questions on that, Jared worked on that more than I did, but I think he put together, you know, information for you, so.
Dave, I saw you had a question earlier on that. Did you get it answered?
Well, no, I did. That was one of those that actually came up before I even got on the, on the board. It surprised me when I saw that, that it was on there, but we do have that. I mean, I'll be happy to, and I know they'll be happy to put this to bed, you know, to put it behind us, because I thought it was already taken care of three years ago, so.
Yeah, but it's another one. We're not quite sure what, how it, it languished for so long, but we've been contacted by Mr. Nakbar a couple of times, so I know he'll be happy that this is getting approved and hopefully resolved finally. And then the, the, I guess the, the biggest item for the night is the transfer hearing for the liquor license. We've, as the memo that Jared put together lays out, we've been in contact with different estate, liquor division, the bankruptcy trustee, the attorney general's office. We've put the information together that we could for you, and just if you have any questions or concerns about it, that's before you tonight, and they'll, there'll be another hearing in December. And then if, if this transfer is approved, there will be a renewal in December and then another renewal come February, so. But if you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to try to, to help explain the situation. It's a bit convoluted.
I don't think it makes good questions.
Okay. And that, I believe, is really all I, I had for you this evening, was just the, the update on the agenda items, unless you have any questions for me.
And we have no executive session items for this evening?
Well, Commissioner North, is there one item we want to discuss this evening?
Well, I think Commissioner Lear did.
Okay.
Yeah, there was something that we needed to discuss. There was something we need to discuss.
Before we go in. Before we go into that, I just wanted to bring someone else up to, the undersheriff had approached me as far as possibly getting bids for the roof where they, for the old fire department and to see, because it's leaking pretty badly over there. And the estimate he came with, back with was substantially higher than anybody was expecting. So if that was the case, we'd end up having to go with three, three bids, three outside bids. I did talk with Tom, and there's a possibility that we could just do a Band-Aid approach for this one or to get it sort of cover over, carry over until next summer, when we can actually get something done and figure out what we want to do with that. So I just want to let, let the commission know what was going on with that and that they had looked at that to get those, those estimates. This is, this is Roden Bridge. It's the old, the old county fire. That's what they use, that's what they use for storage. And so that's what it is. And right now, it's a, it's a good building, but it's been there a very, very long time. And the roof has poly panels in the roof, and it has a lot of. So, but.
Why, why wasn't?
I.
Yeah, why didn't Tom?
I have talked to Tom about that.
Why did Bart go get the bid with him?
I talked to Tom prior to that and asked if he would have a problem with Bart, you know, getting an estimate just to, just to start with. And he, he didn't have any problem with it. So that's, I, I said, you know, as far as getting an estimate goes, we're not committing to anything. And Tom is looking into it in the future a hundred percent. So, okay, no, this is something that it was brought, brought up that there was some damage to some equipment in there that had gotten leaked on and stuff like that. So, no, I, Tom is fully involved in this. He's a hundred percent aware of it and everything else. And like I said, we had looked at it and then from there, we'd, we'd move forward and we, because we weren't going to be committed at that time. So just, like I said, I did just, I did talk to Tom about it prior to telling Bart to go ahead, so.
So if I'm hearing you right, the, the bid that Bart got came back high, and so we'd have to go out the bid. But if you're saying that Tom has a Band-Aid approach, then he should go get an estimate on what it's going to cost.
Yeah, and that's what he's going to do. And he's going to look at, he's going to look at repairing the entire roof, replacing the entire roof and getting some bids on that for next year. But he's gonna, he's gonna try to Band-Aid it so it'll last over the winter and, and take care of a lot of that. But part of the problem is there's a lot of, a lot of locations in their roof where they put things in there like turbine vents, which were the thing to do a long time ago. And those were just access points for leaks, as well as the, the poly panel roofs are to let light through. So there's a lot of stuff that was wrong with that, that built in a long time. But yeah, Tom is the one that's going to be taken care of. So I just thought I'd let you guys know that, that it was looked into a little bit, and the estimates were substantially higher than what, what, what they thought they would be.
Do you know what they were?
The original, the one that Bart had fixed was seventy-five thousand.
And what did you think it was going to cost?
Under fifty.
And what's it, what's this, I hate the word Band-Aid, this temporary fix that you're suggesting. What's that going to cost?
I don't know yet. That's up to Tom.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Mill.
Are we kind of just doing a roundtable thing, whatever pops up right now?
Uh, no, that's not my intent. My intent was actually to take about a ten minute break so they could switch it over from work session to business, then we can come back in, start the business meeting, go into executive session.
Good idea.
Did you have some motion you wanted to add?
Two minutes. Not even that.
Go ahead.
Second session is noticed, our start time is five thirty, and we got it noticed at the end of the week.
Okay, so we need to wait? Okay, well, you've got forty minutes. Go ahead.
We can't. Okay, so. Just something to put in your, in your brain for right now. It is the season with holiday. You know, out there in, in a lot of companies with private sector are able to give their employees bonuses, turkeys, whatever down the road. Our employees are, are lifeblood. We've got really good people working for us. I know it's not part of the twenty twenty-three, I'm not even looking at you right now, so I know you're grief. But. It's not a part of our twenty twenty-three holiday calendar or anything. But since we aren't, you know, we can't do bonuses, we can't do whatever, I'd, I'd really like to do something for appreciation of our employees that, that do work for the county and, and do so much for us. I was just wondering if, what the thought process might be, or, or if there'd be any feeling for, for possibly giving them a twenty-second or twenty-sixth off as part of the holiday. Paid.
You don't want to give them a bonus too?
Can't give them a bonus.
We can't?
Oh, we could, I think, but. You're, you're, you're smiling. I'm ju, I'm just throwing that out there for you guys. I'd like to see us do something.
Commissioner Nick Lees.
Well, I just. If, if we're going to close the county on one of those days, so I think what you're saying, are you saying twenty-second being tomorrow?
No, no, before Christmas. No, no, before Christmas.
Okay, or December twenty-sixth, so. That's, that's the Friday before Christmas, is that what the twenty-second is?
The Friday before Christmas or Tuesday.
I have an idea.
Christmas is on Monday. You've got a better idea. I'm, I'm, I'd like to, I'd just like to do something for.
So your dates are rated, oh, good.
I, I, yes, I don't disagree that we should try to do all that we can for our employees and that they're, I don't disagree that they're a lifeblood because they are. The only issue is what hardship or are, what difficulties are replacing on elected officials and department heads if they haven't been able to really plan that out more than a month in advance? And so I know that we have two department heads really in, in the room at this end of the table and maybe they have some thoughts. I don't have a problem with it in theory, but I guess we need to not have people upset with us because we, you know, closed down their office on an important day that they had, you know, people from the state coming up or whatever.
So to expand on that, if you had two separate dates, you're talking twenty-second or twenty-sixth, leave it to the department heads to make sure that they're staffed enough on each day and they can let half their staff go on one, half staff go on the other day. You don't close the offices down, you have somebody there to work them, but you're just working at minimal staff. Just a thought.
I would, I would think it'd be better to do it, Jim, on the twenty-second than the twenty-sixth.
Dallas, what did you think of what the chairman said about half now?
Well, yeah, we, I, I don't know. I'd like to know what Tracy thinks. I see her moving her head various ways and I don't know what, what she's thinking. What, what are you thinking?
She doesn't know either.
Or at the very least on the twenty-second, you let them all go at noon.
From my perspective, we would need a resolution that would declare this an additional county holiday. And then we have, we have the issue, we may still have to be here anyway because of the Title XXV's. We still have to file those and have hearings on those states. And I don't know if our judges, you know, I assume that they'll be wanting to operate as well. We have to consider them as well.
Heather, would it be a resolution if you, if you're closing down the county for an entire day? But if you don't do that, if you did half and half and leave it to department heads, would you need a resolution then?
No.
Because it's not really a holiday. I mean, it is, but it's not.
The way it sounds to me is you're, you're leaving that option open to the department heads and elected officials to determine whether they will do that.
Correct, yeah. I, I think that, to me, is the best way of doing it. I mean, everybody gets an opportunity to have a day off. You just have to decide within your ranks who gets what day off and vice versa. But then you're not shutting the county down for an entire day.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's a good idea to appease everybody, including the public that still, you know, needs to come and get their business done as well. And then, I guess. Yeah, because, yeah, December thirty-first, so I would be happy with that. I don't have a problem with that. Thank you. You know, I'm always an advocate for the employees, so. But no, I think that's a generous offer and we'll take whatever you decide to give us with appreciation.
I agree with Steve to do it his way. If anybody needs to know what my opinion is.
Those employees that it is offered to and the department heads that allow part of their staff to go on those days, that'll be considered holiday time, is that correct or just, just be paid time? Okay, all right.
Why, why wouldn't you want to give them a two hundred and fifty dollar bonus? Huh?
So what do we need to do, Heather, to make that happen? Just put it out to department head? Yeah. Okay, or I can, we can draft up a letter and send it out to everybody and just, and li, and I really do want to leave it into the department heads courts or everybody's, whoever's in charge of each section to do it as they see fit, so.
What happens, you know, one of the departments has things, a whole bunch of stuff scheduled on those days and can't, or doesn't want to give, want to do this exactly just the way it goes, that's on the department heads. Maybe you can make it flexible for the departments. Usually we might reject the department heads first and flip the idea. But that's the only thing, I don't know. Hopefully it's light duty on those two days.
It will be.
Usually it is, but then the state AG's office says I want to be there on that day. That's, that's my only hesitation, is I have no idea. Move right at like three feet of snow on those days.
The state AG is going to be taking the time off for vacation anyway.
And maybe that's the ask for recommendations from the other. Can you send an email to the department heads and the web pages and say, let me go by tomorrow, close the business or something?
Yeah, well, one, one other thought to throw out there, I mean, the twenty-second is the Friday before, twenty-sixth is after, but technically the holiday really runs through the first or the second. So maybe even if, if that's too tight for them, maybe give them that week's timeframe to let people go see fit. Somebody may just say. Yeah, maybe somebody will say, I want to take twenty-ninth off because I'm going to go to.
That'll be a lot easier for the sheriff.
Yeah.
Be a whole lot easier for the sheriff because then he can let a few people off at a time.
Well, that's a good point, too. I mean, they're on shift work and if their, if their days off are, you know, i- if, if their days off end on the twenty-seventh, maybe they want twenty-eighth to be with family, you know, just extend it out one more day or, so I think we give them that, that timeframe of the twenty-second through the second to use that time off.
To give the employees an extra day off.
Yep, yep, yep.
I like it. Thank you.
Good. That's why I'm here, problem solver. Anything else? And that was actually right at about eight minutes, Jim.
Really?
No, I think you said two in the beginning, so.
Why don't you discuss, what, Jim, discuss how you could give them a bonus?
There is no action to take place. There's no resolution or anything. It'll just be on them to do it as they fit in that timeframe. Okay, anything else? Going once, twice, okay, gone. Stand in recess until our business meeting at five thirty.
So do I just get out of it and then close it up and then reopen it? All right, thank you, sir.
You're in my, you're in my profile. It is. It's already open.
I know.